...nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. And there will be, with the agreement of the board, a motion to approve the superintendent's facility committee, which will come. Jim will talk about what that committee is and how he's going to constitute it. And then he will come back to us if we approve, if we authorize him to approve that commit, to create that committee, then he would come back to us with the membership of that committee, which we would then approve either on the second or the nineteenth. So that will be kind of following his, kind of informing us of that committee during his superintendent's report. And we also anticipate there'll be no non-public session or no non-meeting session tonight, even though those are on the agenda. So with those modifications, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Moved by Denise, second by Al. Discussion on that? No? Al in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the agenda is approved. Public comment? Okay. Approval of the minutes? So we have several to approve. Motion to approve the June seventh, seventeen, non-public minutes.
Before we make a motion on that, could I just ask a question about that one? On the June seventeenth, non-public session, we discussed two separate matters.
I'm sorry, there's no June seventeenth.
June.
That's June seventh.
June seventh.
June seventh, and then there's June twenty-first.
Yeah. So with the June seventh meeting, we discussed two separate personnel matters. One, we are having a district attorney be involved in investigation. The second, we are doing internal, so that minutes don't reflect that there were two separate issues, and I think we should reflect that. So before we make a motion, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that agreed upon by all of us, that that's exactly what transpired.
I think if we're going to agree with, on something like that, we're going to have to amend. Are you asking us to amend the minutes?
I would like to, but I just want to make sure that my recollection isn't, you know, out to lunch there.
Yeah, no, it's accurate, Kenny. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Okay. So.
I'm sort of wondering whether we should, you know.
So I could read, I could just say, I'd like to amend the minutes to read. This school board was informed of two personnel matters. On one of them, the school's attorney was asked to do an investigation, and on the other matter, the school is doing an internal investigation. And that's what I would like.
Is that agreeable?
So that, I move that to be amended. So is there a second?
Al.
Okay. Okay, the.
Was that Michael or Dan?
I said.
Okay, so essentially, you moved it with that, with that amendment.
Exactly.
And the second by, seconded by Dan. Okay, is that agreeable?
There's one other correction. I think Dr. Morse was present and should be listed there.
Right. Okay. Okay, with that correction, are we ready to vote? All of us in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, those minutes are approved. We have the June twenty-first regular minutes. Can I have a motion? Denise?
I motion to approve the June twenty-first regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Michael. I had a question, and it's, my memory's foggy, this has been a while. This would be on, I'm sure now what page it is. It's where, Michael says, "Michael Williams moved to amend the above goal eight to read to begin developing a strategic plan for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-four with completion by December two thousand eighteen." Second by Al Holland. "The board had a discussion around the framework of the strategic plan. Motion passed six to one." And so he had it amended, was there one vote or was there two votes?
There were two votes, right.
There's a vote on the amendment.
Right. And then after, after that, there's three sentences, paragraphs, there should be a second vote before the next thing that goes eight action, where the board voted on the amended.
Goals.
Goals. And then that vote again was six to one.
That was also six to one.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. There were two votes. And one other correction on.
And what was the vote? What, what, what was the, was it seven?
Six to one.
It was six to one.
Both votes were six to one.
With the, right.
Yeah.
And then the, one other correction, which is more grammatical. I'm trying to find where that is. On goal three, the, if we go to the next to last sentence, the words evolving and the should be switched. We added evolving, but the evolving should really come after the the, the way it reads now doesn't make sense.
Oh, with evolving the high school, you're right.
No. Goal number three, so it's on page, page five.
Page five, I'm sorry.
Page five, goal three, next to last sentence.
No, that makes, the evolving, because the high school system is evolving.
Well, you wouldn't say with evolving the high school system, it's the evolving high school.
Yeah, it is correct on here. Oh, so it was just incorrect on there, okay.
In the minutes, yeah.
So it's incorrect in the minutes, but it's correct on our actual goals.
Okay. Other corrections?
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I had, yes, I, on page two, under board comments, where it says, "Denise Day read the list of the following members of the Oyster River who are retiring. I'd like to add and thank them for their service."
Okay. Okay, other changes? Hearing none, are we ready to vote on this? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Then opposed, the two thousand, the June twenty-first regular minutes are approved. We have non-public minutes for two thousand, for the twenty-first.
June twenty-first. I'll motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes for June twenty-first.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? Second by Al. Changes? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven in favor, those minutes are approved. Now the real controversial one, the manifest minutes for July sixth.
I just, I just had a question whether we, I mean, it's just Al and I, do we have to, do we have to approve that? As a, I was confused by that.
Not really a meeting.
It's not really a meeting, or is it?
Basically, you've made a recommendation that the manifest be approved to the full board, so the full boards should support your recommendation.
Okay.
So there should be a record where the board said they affirmed the recommendation of the manifest committee.
Okay, then I will go ahead and motion to accept the manifest meeting minutes, I guess.
Moved by Denise, second by Al. All in favor?
We were extremely.
Seven in favor, okay.
A lot of trust there.
Okay. Analysis coming from the board. Kenny?
Tonight is the first night that Denise Garretti is not here as Principal of Moheramet. And I've worn a Moheramet shirt today to say that I think we are in great hands with David Gomencoer and think that this transition and new leadership will be wonderful for all of us, so I wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Denise?
I have two things. First of all, and it's coming up in the agenda a little later on, about as far as approving the Oyster River High School handbook, but when I was looking through it and I saw the schedule for this fall, and I just wanted to kind of recognize that it really looks like there was some work done to be able to offer those office hours at the end of the day and so on and so forth. So I just kind of wanted to note that, that, you know, really think that it looks, you know, that a lot of work was done, I'm sure, with Heather and Suzanne and probably whoever the other folks that were involved with that. The second thing, I just saw this article on standing desks, and just kind of wanted to, I just thought it was really interesting that, you know, the study is showing the benefit of having standing desks for kids, and that, you know, at some point down the line, in terms of, you know, maybe it ties into the middle school facility, but it might be something worth kind of looking at as far as purchasing some standing desks, not for an entire classroom so much, but just to have some workstations in that, in that way, so.
I have that, Denise?
Yeah. You can have it, it's just a little.
Brian?
Had the great opportunity to be at the, the day after our last meeting, the eighth grade celebration. And although it was hot, it was humid, but it was a great turnout. From what I, my hats off to Stephanie Pratt, who really took six months to put this all together, and from what I heard, were the best ones yet, because the kids were totally excited. I think you know where they're really involved and really engaged, was because there was a lot of leftover food at the end of the night. So, you know. So, I didn't take any home, but, but it was great. Theme was around the world, and they had a mock metal detector, they had, I mean, everybody was involved, the parents, the teachers, everything. Country, small, over the world represented. It was really, really engaging for the kids, so.
What was the event, Brian?
The eighth grade celebration.
Eighth grade celebration.
The eighth grade celebration at the middle school. And I, so hats off again to Stephanie Pratt, who did a great job, her and her entire staff. Six months in the making was great. And I stopped by the Masway today, Masway School, which is, and under some serious reconstruction right now, and I took a peek through, and it's, it's, it's going full speed, so, and the playground is also being worked on, and that's going to be exciting. So I'm excited for when the kids go back, what they see in the end of August, as far as, you know, the new bathrooms, and new classrooms, and the new playground and everything. So it's kind of exciting to see. I love seeing the work in progress, so, and sure it'll be clean by then, too, because it's quite, it's quite messy. The gym is pretty full.
Great. Other board comments? Hearing none, okay. Assistant Superintendent's report?
I'll be brief, but I did want to let you know, we had our new staff orientation. We're doing it in two parts this year, because we actually have a very large contingent of new staff. At last count, we have hired nineteen, and we still have two more to go. So we have twenty-one new staff in the district, which is unusual for Oyster River. So we're breaking our orientation into two parts. We did an initial orientation on July eleventh, and ninety percent of them were able to be, be here and be a part of that. All of the new staff have been assigned experienced staff mentors that will be working with them for the course of the year. We have another orientation day on August twenty-third, where we're really gonna, we're trying something new this year, where we're gonna, we're surveying the staff, because there's the new staff. Some of them are outright brand-new people, and others of them are experienced educators that are coming to us. So we didn't want to have one-size-fits-all training, so we're surveying them, and we're going to provide a variety of trainings that will hopefully benefit them all and get their mentors connected with them, so that they can arrive here that first week of school ready to go. So very exciting, the level of energy from this group of new staff was really exciting. Yeah, and I was actually doing some of the math on how much this, how many new staff we have, and it's like ten percent of our entire professional staff is new for next year, which for Oyster River is a, is a very unusual thing. So very exciting, great stuff. I also wanted to just make a couple of quick updates on summer programming that's going on. First of all, as I've mentioned multiple times, REACH is actively in progress. Every day, we still have parents coming in saying, "Hey, can I sign my kid up for next week?" So we're still plugging people in where we have available spots. So it's not too late if you, as a parent, are still looking for a spot for your child. The numbers are really, really good. We had seventy-five kids the first week, seventy-five kids this week. We're anticipating hitting around three hundred total kids involved by the end of the summer. And really, really good stuff going on here. We had stop-motion animation, we've had robotics, we've had multiple art camps, we've had, let's see, we've had a fairy camp, a fairy-themed camp, which was pretty cool. So just a lot of really neat things. I had a, I had a young student come up to me, and he said, "Do you, do you drive the Amtrak train?" And I said, "No, I don't." And, "But thanks for asking." I said, "Does it look like the guy that drives the Amtrak?" And he goes, "Yeah, you just, you have that kind of look. You look like you're an Amtrak driver." And then we had a wonderful conversation about which was my favorite airline, which I thought was really cool. So I think, apparently, he likes to travel, so it was a really cool little conversation.
We'll have to get you a cap tie.
There you go. I didn't realize I had that Amtrak train conductor look.
Does that mean we need to start looking for new assistant superintendent?
Well, actually, it's a pretty exciting, pretty exciting job. It's a double-decker train, apparently, so, anyway. It was very fun. I also want to mention that there's a lot of really great enrichment stuff happening besides REACH. We have two hundred and fifty middle school kids that are doing summer math enrichment, working through IXL, working with Ruth Galing and John McArthur to facilitate that. So that's a lot of kids, that's almost half the middle school are choosing. This is all choice, it's nobody's being required to do. A lot of kids who are engaged in that, that's wonderful. At the high school, I was over there, they have their traditional, you know, credit recovery summer school program, but they also have, for the first time, a math enrichment program going on. There are twenty kids signed up for that. Kids that are looking, these are not, these are kids that are basically looking to strengthen their math skills for whatever next step they're going to take, so it's, it's really cool to see. It's a range of incoming freshmen, all the way up through kids going into their senior year, who just, you know, are looking for ways to be more successful in math. So it's, it's really great to see. So a lot of really cool, enriching stuff happening this summer. So, anyway, thank you.
Great.
What middle school in the world would have two hundred and fifty kids volunteer to go in and do math in the summertime? It's pretty amazing.
Superintendent's report?
So I'll just start out with the enrollment at the elementary schools, and Michael sent me an email earlier today, "Pay no, pay no attention to the averages, because the algorithms were wrong." And both David and, and Carrie have corrected them, but I don't have the corrected versions for tonight. The numbers are right, though, so, class sizes and the totals. As you can see, it's pretty, pretty, pretty consistent. We haven't had a giant in-migration over the summer, or if we've had migration in over the summer, there's been exiting as well, because the numbers are pretty much where we left in June, with three hundred and eighteen students at Masway. We're anticipating, I'm, excuse me, I got to read the right line. Masway's anticipating three hundred and forty students, and Moheramet is anticipating three hundred and thirty-five students. So if that holds, it'll be the first time that Masway is actually larger than Moheramet in my tenure, so, in the last five years. So it's quite, quite a switch. And you can see that the pattern now is, as we're moving forward in time with Moheramet, we're seeing three divisions of classes instead of four. As we're moving forward in time with Masway, we're seeing four divisions instead of three. So unfortunately, they're not happening at a parallel moment, so we can just switch staff, although next year, we should be in sync. And if Masway continues to grow, we'll be able to move a staff member from Moheramet over there, as opposed to having to hire new. So that's where we are in July, not a whole lot different than we were in June, but pretty good class sizes, couple to worry about, as you can see, as we approach the twenty-two range at the Moheramet School in grade two, and approach the twenty-two range in grade three and four at Masway. So, right at the edge of class sizes in those three classes, everything else is pretty solid.
And I'm forgetting, how many classrooms exist at Moheramet?
We'll actually have one classroom free. David, you know that off the top of your head, how many classrooms you have? Is it seventeen?
The actual, the last I looked, there are, I think, eight rooms in each room.
So sixteen, yeah.
They're using various, and we've already found a lot of, a lot of activities going with that.
And we are looking at how we could expand the classroom space at Masway, if this trend continues, and we'll have that planned for the board as we enter budget season. But we'd like to avoid portable classrooms if we possibly can.
So the, and the, one of the situations in Moheramet was art didn't have a designated classroom.
They do.
And now that's, that's okay, good.
Yeah. We should be able in eighteen, nineteen, to get rid of the portables. So we should give down one more class, and that will give us the ability to bring those two teachers back into the building and get rid of our temporary structure that's been there for over twenty years.
Which is what I was trying to ask about, great.
Great. So moving on, just wanted to give you, as Todd alluded to, we've hired nineteen staff. Thanks, thank you to the board for allowing us to start so aggressively and so early. Typically, we'd be in the midst of hiring, and we're at the end of the hiring process, assuming nobody resigns in July, which is sort of what happened to Jay Richard in the world language opening. We had two out of the three world language teachers in the middle school leave. Jay's been successful in replacing one of those, and he's struggling to replace the second one. Just so you know, unlike, say, the kindergarten or the first grade or the primary school, where we would have, you know, eighty to ninety applicants in world language, we're lucky if we get one, two, three, or four. And so it's really caused some serious worry on Jay's part, because here we are well into July, and he hasn't been successful in, in capturing a world language teacher. And David's situation is due to the internal transfer. When we created the technology integrator positions, one of our classroom teachers, who's very well-respected in the building, Sarah Curtin, applied for the IT position. So she's moved over into that, which leaves a classroom position free for David to fill. And he's doing interviews tomorrow and Friday, and I'll do interview, interviews of his finalists on Friday, so that particular position, I'm not worried about. So I just wanted to put on the table that we're still struggling for a world language candidate.
Is it multi-language, or is it just one?
Spanish, right? Is it Spanish, Jay?
I think maybe we should, yeah, I'm sorry. It doesn't. Like Dr. Morse said, it's been rather unique in terms of what did happen. The second resignation was actually on June, what, twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, that last teacher workshop day at two fifteen. And I'm pleased you don't, it has nothing to do with me, this person, who was an excellent teacher, decided to move to California to be with their boyfriend, so that's, was the unique circumstance. The challenge is, we, ideally, we want someone that can do both French and Spanish, but we can hire someone that could just do French or can do, do just Spanish. So one of my world language teachers fortunately can do both, so that's how we can have a little bit of flexibility in that.
Thanks, Jay. Then Todd alluded, Tom alluded to the fact that I asked Tom and Denise if I could create a facilities, a superintendent's facilities committee, and the core of that would be the board members. And so you have a stapled sheet in your packet to kind of give you what I'm hoping to achieve. So I took the board goal, and I'm basing it on the unadopted charge that we'll talk about later, but I broke the charge out into monthly meetings. And part of the idea of having a superintendent's committee is, I can build it bigger than just the three board members, and get, and have elected town officials, so I'd love to get a counselor and a selectman from Durham, and a selectman from Medbury, and a selectman from Lee. And then, what I was really hoping to achieve is even broader community representation, and bring in, hopefully, an additional two people from each town. So I had sent an email out to the board to communicate back to me if you had names of people who you would want me to consider. So, you know, the criteria really is, you know, if they have a building expertise, and architectural expertise, and engineering expertise, if they are budgetarily savvy, if they have deep roots in, in the, in any of the communities, so that as we're moving this agenda forward, the, the larger communities can see that we broke through just having it be in-house committee, that we were really looking for engagement from the entire community. And so, that's what I'll, I need authorization to create a superintendent's facility committee. And again, the core would be our, our board's committee, but we want to broaden it to get more participation. And, and, you know, some names that you guys have floated would be fabulous members. So what I would intend to do is take those names tomorrow, vet them through the facilities committee, and then send out invitation letters as early as Friday, and hopefully, get enough of a response that I can bring those names back to you at the first meeting in August, but no later than the second meeting of August. So I may even do it as a rolling. If I have three on August second, then I'll get those three approved by you, and then if I get another three for August sixteenth, I'll get those three approved by you. The idea would be, we start right out in September, and you can see what I would like to do is, first of all, orient the, the larger group to the discussion, make sure that they have copies of the three reports, the Davis report, the Blatt report, and the Siemens report will be done in the fall. Denise suggested that we have a long-range planning committee member as part of the six. I think that's a fabulous idea, because then we'll have an expertise on enrollment. And so the idea is really to have a, a powerful, community-based committee that can work through the issues, which include, you know, all the options we've discussed. I mean, some point, we have to get all of these options, and we have a buffet of options, you know, a K through eight option for the two elementary schools, transforming them from K four units to K eight units, looking at the idea of bringing sixth, seventh, and eighth to the high school, looking at bringing the fourth grade into the middle school, so that there's more room at the elementary schools, building new on the current location, building new someplace else, and, someplace else meaning someplace in Lee, Medbury, or Durham, and Notton Dova, or New Market. And, and then, you know, having that committee go through the pros and cons of every idea, and the idea then would be to get to April, where we start talking about what's the preferred option, and spend a couple of months, be really pounding away on why is one, or maybe two of these ideas really strong ideas, and get it down to one, so that the committee would be making a recommendation to this body as to the direction for the two following years, which would mean we're choosing an option, we go out in the community, we talk about that option, we get into as many venues as possible over the two years, and hopefully, when we go to a bond, we'd get board support, regardless of what the choice is, that the, the committee recommends to you guys. So that would be the action strategy for the committee for the year, and I'm certainly open to questions if, if the board has any.
Denise?
Do you want a motion now? Would you like to have a motion?
Yeah, it'd be great, it'd be great to get a motion.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize our superintendent to, to convene a facilities, is it facility study committee, or?
Superintendent's facilities committee.
Yeah, superintendent's facilities committee.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? Second by Brian? Other questions? So, so you will invite people to come, you'll invite people to be on this committee pending, you know, the agreement of the board to, so just like this, you know, this step, then you'll come back to us with.
Yeah, so.
With the group, and then we would vote to approve that as a meeting, then start offering.
Yeah, so, the three members of the facilities committee, it actually turns out that each of you has, well, I haven't heard from Kenny, so two of the three of you have conflicts tomorrow, so I've asked if I could vet those names, either through email or through an earlier meeting, so everybody knows what's going on. Because I don't want to be responsible by myself of making decisions on who gets invited and who doesn't, because, you know, really looking for your input. This person brings this skill, this person brings that skill, you'll know them better than I. And I do want to thank Brian and Denise and Michael for putting names forward in the last couple of weeks, and those are on the list. And so we just need to, you know, make sure we get, you know, a really great group of people who are committed to this process. And it's a big commit, because we're asking people to commit once a month, where usually we don't have that kind of intensity behind our committees. And so it's, it's really important. So what I intend to put in the letter is, you know, we're inviting you, but I also intend to put in the charge, assuming it's approved later in the meeting, and this agenda for the year. So they'll have a good sense of what they're committing to, and it'd be very purposeful, and in the end, I think, very beneficial to the community. and, in the end, I think, very beneficial to the community at large to know that we've really reached out and, and engaged people.
And you've done this, and you've planned for schools before. Is this something similar to what you've done?
It's exactly what I did in Mezalonski, when we built a new middle school, tried to break outside the school community. It's really important that we break through the traditional walls of the school community, because ultimately, this is not voted by employees. This is voted by taxpayers. And so, those taxpayers have to be convinced that this, at this point, it would be 82-year-old facility is no, needs, it needs a, a major overview, or it needs to be replaced. And when, so we'll be talking in terms of, you know, millions upon millions of dollars of commitment, you know, three years down the road. So, in my experience, the more engaged we are with the community at large, the more successful the vote ultimately will likely be. And it's a long haul. We've been talking about it internally for three years, and now we're saying, okay, let's shift gear. Let's, this is a fresh start from a district-wide perspective, engaging as many people as we possibly can to make sure we do have a positive outcome, and that we're not going out and out and out. I mean, all-day kindergarten took us nine years, and the, the field took us 19 years. It would be nice if we didn't have to spend, you know, kind of always going out and adjusting so forth. If we can build the capacity in the community and the support in the community, I think it would be, it could happen. It's going to take, I mean, anybody who walks in the current facility would get a sense of it's, it's tired. It's done its job. It's been a great building. It's serviced thousands of kids over the decades it's been in place. But there's only so much you can do to fix a building, and eventually, the building needs to be replaced. So, yes, I've done all of this, and I think this is the best practice. In terms of Jay's staff, what I, I thought would be, we'd follow the same pattern, Jay, but then, you know, you had a dozen staff members who were engaged in this process. So, you and I would flip from the larger committee into a school-based committee, so your staff would continuously be able to react to the same agenda as the bigger community staff. And that way, we wouldn't have to limit your staff's participation.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
I just want to say one thing, just as kind of looking at this as a launch, and to kind of add to what Superintendent Moore said. I think one of the lines that I heard in the past that, to me, really makes me committed to this plan, is right now, we have a facility that is sort of dictating our education model, rather than education dictating or informing the school facility. And we're hoping to, to be able to, to reverse that with a new project.
And just another point, I think that the timing, we have time before the high school bond is paid off. There's this, and so that, I think the timing works out pretty well in terms of this three-year development, and then propose it at a time where it'll coincide with the high school bond being paid, which I think, timing-wise, makes a lot of sense. So, I think we're, it's kind of the right time to get it started. So, we ready to vote? Okay? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the authorization is there, and?
Thank you very much.
Later, later in the agenda, we'll have the, the charge, that the facilities committee developed a charge, and we can take, we'll need to approve that as well. So, we ready for the business administrator, right?
Are you ready for another budget season?
Yeah.
I just wanted to get the calendar out in front of you, just so you have those dates. The big day that Al asked about is November 8th. Actually, it's a Wednesday, because the following day is a professional development day, and the following Friday is a holiday. So, there you have it. Questions?
We are starting later, so we hope that we will have, we, we should have health insurance rates before we have that big day, so we'll have that. I think we're going to put the budget goals on the next agenda, or one of the meetings in August, to talk about budget goals.
Yep.
All good?
Questions about this? Do we need to approve this, or is this?
I think, is it on the agenda for approval? Yeah, we should, we should.
So, we need a motion to approve?
To approve the budget process calendar. Denise?
A motion to approve the budget process calendar for 2018-19.
Second by Al. Further discussions on this? I just thought that, I mean, that November 8th meeting really ran well last time. I thought it was really focused, and, you know, we got just the amount of information we needed and not too much, so. Agreed to vote? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, that calendar's approved.
And just a quick update. We met with the Siemens Group for the performance contracting on July 10th. Went over, actually, we met the team, the key team, for all of the work that's going to be done. And I actually have, and I can have Wendy send that out to you, a list of everything they're going to do. So, you'll have that. And they're scheduled to do a presentation of those results on September 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the student senate report, middle, middle school communications outreach plan for competencies.
Obviously, we're embarking on a, a major step forward with regards to competency-based reporting this, this upcoming fall at the middle school. Clearly, one of the things we really want to make sure to do is to make it very clear what we're doing, why we're doing it, and make sure all of our, our community members and family members understand the process and feel that we are doing everything in our power to help them understand this new process, and also provide support as we go along, so that we're completely transparent about where we're going. One of the things that Jay and I and his committee have tried to do with this communications plan is, we really want to be responsive as questions come up. So, we've tried to make it in such a way that we're regularly soliciting input, feedback through things like a focus group and surveys, and then retooling kind of our message to try to address those questions as we go. So, you'll see that we are really front-loading a lot of information in September, and then kind of taking it as it comes in terms of what people's needs are at that point. Do you want to talk about the whole?
Sure. This is my to-do list, or homework list. The big bulk of the work will be done, a lot will be done in August with my PLC group. Who is my PLC group? You've met all those staff members over the past couple of years, so that's who will be helping me create that plan. I will also invite any other interested staff that might want to help out with that. All will be welcome, as always. And, you know, just creating, like, for example, strategic videos that we can put on our website, frequently asked questions, those types of things. And another big piece is in terms of making sure I have a lot of parental involvement throughout the year, in terms of creating focus groups, where I would have a group of anywhere from 10 to 20 parents come in, and we'd talk about, for example, after first quarter, what do you think of the current report card? What did you like? What would you like to see changed? How can we better inform you in terms of how your child's doing in school currently? So, just those types of questions, and get that feedback. And I promise, I'll continue to report throughout the year to all of you how things are going, and the insight we do get from parents and students, and, of course, teachers too, in terms of how that is going. So, you know, we're going to be, you know, communications is the key, and we want to make sure we communicate very, very well with the entire school community. Any questions about, in terms of the plan, or any suggestions for additions? Denise?
The only, and thank you very much. I think it's very thorough and absolutely should give people, they can't say at the end of this, I didn't know what was going on, or whatever. My only suggestion is at the, the last, the very last one, where it talks about the implementation plan?
Yeah.
I would just like to suggest changing it to recommend, recommend, and, how do I say this? Recommended implementation plans for 2018 will be made and shared with the school board for approval, because again, coming, you know, talking about coming it back for approval. And so, just, that would be my suggested wording, is just adding the word recommended before implementation.
Yeah.
And then, for approval period, and then the next sentence being, final plan will be shared with parent and community.
Okay. That's fine. And I, I do want to mention, you know, this is like a current potential timeline, but if anything happens or anything changes throughout the process, I could potentially move things up.
Right.
You know, or, or back. But more likely, you know, move things up. So, instead of doing that, and, you know, May and June, maybe we might decide to make a change and do that in, in late April due to parent or student feedback, or something like that.
Right, sure.
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Feedback somebody gave me, of course. It was like, they said that they couldn't figure out how to read the competencies. So, like, at the beginning of the year, I know when you're doing all that frequent, frequently asked questions and all that kind of stuff, it's just like, how do they read the competencies? And then, the concern that they had was if their student is progressing, that, what does that, what does that mean?
Right.
How, how they stand, they were trying to kind of, in their brain, figure out, does that mean they're, they were still going back to grades, is that a C?
Yeah.
You know, but they, so they were like, well, I thought my kid was doing okay, they were progressing, but then they didn't progress all the way to meetings, so.
Right.
So, I think that, that beginning step where we talk about that would be helpful.
I mean, our goal is to do, like, for example, screen casts, actually, how you actually walk through as a parent, looking at Power School, and what it all means, and making sure those are very visible locations on our website. And also, I, I plan to strategically use my, you know, weekly updates here. This is really important, and even send those independently. This is how, for example, right before first quarter, before the reports go out, this is how you access this, this is how you read it, this is what it means. A frequently asked question would be, you know, if your student is currently progressing, what does that mean? What can you do as a parent? What can your student do? And what kind of communication will your, you know, your son or daughter's teacher share with you? So, good feedback.
I had a couple of questions. I was wondering, like, if you, if you have the parent focus group in October, will students, will they have gotten a report card by October?
The, the first focus group, I think we were going to do something, or late September, is work with the PTO to kind of prep people for the first report card, to get parent insight and feedback in terms of what they're going to be seeing. So, again, it's just?
Go to anticipate the first report.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. From my, one of, one of the things that I really want to know is, do these, do the parents find this report card informative, providing them with the information that they, that they need to understand their students' learning and progress?
Yeah.
So, and I think that if you do these surveys, I mean, I think we need to see the results of the surveys.
Yeah.
Not just an implementation plan.
Yeah.
So, I think that's maybe implicit in this, but I think we need to see that. And if, and if they found the previous system better, you know, more informative, that, that should be also something that they're asked.
Yeah.
If they found that one better, why did they find that better?
Right.
So, so, so I think that, you know, that's, that's the key question, you know, because I think some of us, we're, we're not sure that that reporting system would provide everything a parent would want. So, you know, this is the real test, and I hope that that survey can really get at them.
Right. That's great feedback, Tom. And I think a good idea would be, is any kind of questions that we would put into some type of focus group or survey to share with all of you prior? So, if you have any suggestions in terms of?
Yeah.
An additional question, or remove this one, and, of course, I would, I would want that insight and feedback prior.
That would be good. And just one final thing, that in the implementation plan that we approved, there was a survey of students, and I didn't see that on here. Just, is there a survey of students on the plan?
We didn't specifically highlight that, no, but that's, we can, absolutely, that's, you're absolutely right, that's an omission.
Okay. I mean, maybe I think at the, you know, once they've gone through two or three rounds of it?
Yeah.
Does it, because they're, they're also an audience, I think, for the report card.
Absolutely.
Parents for the students. So, if that could be added, I think that'd be a good thing.
Yeah.
Just one. I mean, I don't think you have to do multiple ones, but if you just did one, that would be good.
Yeah. My goal would be that I have all the information that you would want as a school board, and provide all that data and information to you, so you have as much information as possible in terms of, you know, my clientele, in terms of meeting my, what do my students think? And what do my parents think?
Great, great. That's, that's exactly what we want. Other? No? Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yep. Got some work to do. Okay. So, now, I think we're ready to go to the, we've approved the budget calendar, the facilities charge, which was, we all should have.
So, the charge is in your packet as well? And so, the facilities committee constructed this and are presenting it to you for your approval. The charge becomes the foundation document for all of the work that the superintendent's facilities committee will be doing over the year. So, it's pretty critical, and we're hoping that you guys can approve this tonight.
Denise?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the facility committee charge as presented.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Brian? I had one question, because you're, I think we're trying, you know, because I was part of the group that helped shape this, and I think it pretty much gets at it. But what, would one option be maintenance, like, just continuing to do, or is that really not even on the table? By that, I mean, you know, we're going to, like, keep doing what we're, kind of what we're doing now, and just continue to do that into the future, or is that?
I think that that has to be discussed. I mean, I think that the, when you say it's an 81-year-old building, and people walk in and they see a clean building, it's different than having a building that continues to function at optimal capacity. So, I think the Davis report in particular gives us a sense of what we'd have to invest in that building in order to bring it to a standard. But that standard doesn't meet Kenny's issue, which is foundational, that the building itself does, no longer delivers the kind of facility that allows Jay and his staff to optimize middle school education. I, I think that, you know, the committee should discuss that issue, and it will come up through the Davis report. It's not a recommendation I would be making, because you would just really be dumping hundreds of thousands of dollars annually into that building because it's so tired.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying that.
Oh, okay.
But I'm just saying, is that, is that something that the committee needs to look at?
Absolutely.
So, these, these reports would, would have them look at that.
Yeah.
Because I mean, I'm just wondering if people say, what, you know, are you not going to look at just continuing to?
So, that report?
Keep the building up?
Yeah. The Siemens report also, that will come out this fall. We've asked them, and I remember Michael asking them specifically, and Mike reinforcing it, was the issue of looking at that building's infrastructure and what would need to be invested in it just to keep it operational.
Yeah.
You know, I go back to last spring, where we spent almost $6,000 on a pump, because it had to be manufactured for us, because the equipment is so dated that you can't buy parts for it anymore. Those are the kinds of anomalies that happen in a building that, that's, that's old. I, I think the Davis report and the, and the new Siemens report will reinforce that.
Okay.
And maybe, Tom, and I get what you're saying, but maybe we can use kind of a broad sense of what renovations are, kind of like?
Yeah.
You're putting in a new burner, you know, fueler in your house, that's a renovation, but it's also a maintenance, so.
Yeah. I just think it's part of the argument, that if we do?
Absolutely.
If we just continue like we're continuing, we're, we're entailing cost, and, you know, it's like an old car, you know, you keep putting money into it.
Right.
You know? So, so I think, I mean, I'll take that that's implicit in, in this, we don't need to add any language, but I just thought that's important.
Yeah, I agree, because I think actually, what you're doing is, you're supposed to be doing the pro and cons of all the options. And so, you know, I'm just looking at how New Market went through there, trying to do their renovation, rebuild, whatever. And part of it is going to be, when you look at just maintaining the current status quo, which is, for some people, the easiest way to think about it, you can begin to really begin, look at what does that cost?
Yeah.
And it gives you a good comparison, then, of like, all the other options, so, you know, it's just a, a better way.
Brian?
Well, I think the status quo, what you were saying, it kind of has to be, you have to be aware of it, because if this goes on the ballot and the ballot fails, they have to know what their, what their, you know, what the alternative is to, to not voting it. So, I mean, I think that you have to put some weight into that discussion of just maintaining the building as is, and just doing the minimum requirements to keep it up to code, which it's not up to code right now. I mean, it's not, you know, ADA compliant and everything else, so, I mean, it's, you have to be, be aware of what the alternative is. So, I think there has to be some type of more, you know, due diligence in far as saying, you know, hey, if we do keep the building, this is what it's going to cost. hey, if we do keep the building, this is what it's going to cost. And versus the new building, what it's not going to cost versus what it is going to cost, you know, and you have to make, so people can make an educated decision on what they're doing. So I think that there has to be some weight, I think, on the, the decision that we don't want, but I mean, it's still an option.
Still an option.
It's still, whether we want it to be an option or not, it's still an option because it's not our decision, it's the taxpayer's decision, so.
It's like our default budget.
So, I mean, if your sense is that that, I mean, it sounds to me like if you go over those reports, but according to your plan, that's going to be on the table, right?
Absolutely. The very, the first meetings are talking about those reports.
So, okay. Are there other questions about this? I think we tried to say, you know, let's see, we're formulating, like, there's a whole bunch of options that Stephen Black came up with, there's a couple that came up and that we'll just have to look at, this committee will have to look at all of them because, you know, Jim has mentioned, you know, you don't want to come to a presentation and say, well, what about X, you know, and that wasn't something we looked at. So it's a fairly, a lot of things will have to be looked at. So are we, further questions on this? You ready to go with this? Okay. So it's moved, I think we have a motion and a second, right?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the charge is approved. It's great. This is a really important start. This is an important, important point.
And then we wanted to talk a little bit about communication related to this work. What, the board has adopted a communications protocol as part of last year's work and what we would want to do in terms of that protocol is put the full force of that protocol behind this effort, which really means multiple communication channels from traditional to technology and making sure we're getting the word out as comprehensively as we can. We can even use our ability to communicate directly to all of our families, maybe in a, you know, twice a year fashion because I don't want to overwhelm them with a school messenger. And, you know, just really be conscious that we have to get this thing out into the community. That it can't, even with a broader committee, it can't stay even with that broad committee. We have to constantly be talking about it. And, and that light, Tom and I could start out by writing a opinion piece for Fosters saying that we're starting the process and we're forming the committee and this is why we're doing the work that we're doing to try to get a, you know, a big salvo out in the, in the fall.
I'm just going to add one other piece to that. There's a, from the Durham side, we've built, it's from the business side, built a website called, or a, on Facebook, it's called Celebrating Durham. And that's going out to the community that's not just the traditional school community, it's also engages all the business. And then by fall, hopefully, we're trying to get an intern working with us in economic development, we'll build a blog that also will link to that and that'll link to the, to the Durham town page. So that'll give another avenue to advertise beyond the traditional school group.
I know you had, before, having a joint session maybe with the selectmen and council of each town. Is that still an option to kind of go over where we're at, where we're going and?
And I, you know, I, I will reach out. Durham has a bigger council than the two small towns and we, I don't know, you know, whether the two smaller towns would be interested in doing something like that because it's, it's a burden, much bigger burden on them with only three people representing the towns. But I'll reach out and see if there's interest.
I mean, I know in some small talk with three, they've been open to that. So, yeah.
Okay.
So they're, they're curious as to what's going on and they, they like to share information, so.
All right. I'll follow up on that, Brian. Thank you.
And one thing, you know, Jim and I have talked about is what I think, like, you mentioned like an opinion piece, you know, that once we get the committee formed, and I think it's still, I mean, maybe what, probably around the end of August, September, when people are starting to really engage with, you know, school and, you know, summer's over, to really, to kind of lay out kind of the argument why we're doing this, using the Blatt report, using, you know, and, and not to, not to say this is what we want to do, but this is a process that we're starting and this is why we're starting this process. And I almost think it's like a starter's gun, you know, that this is, this is, we're starting something. You know, we're starting a process and this is hugely consequential. I think it's the most consequential thing that this, you know, my time on the board that we were ever even started. So, but to kind of announce that this, this major process is being started and this is why we're doing it. So, so I think we could imagine maybe writing something in the summer, but, and share it at the meeting with the board and then see, see, you know, get that out there and say, okay, we're, we're starting. I mean, we kind of started, we've talked about it, there's a kind of a start last year, but this is the real serious start to this, this issue.
So do you need a, do you need a motion then?
No, because you have approved protocol. I'm just letting you know that we're going to use it to the nth degree to try to keep communication broad and open across the community.
Okay. Motion to approve the Oyster River High School handbook. Denise?
A motion to approve the Oyster River High School handbook.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Brian. Discussion on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Yeah, it's approved. And I know if the, I kind of don't think this should be a board responsibility myself. I don't know how the policy committee feels about that. I think approving handbooks, we shouldn't be-
So what I was suggesting to Tom was rather than this annual handbook and the principals do the, oh my gosh, we had to get this handbook in front of the, and then they have to get it to the printer and so forth, is to expect the principals to produce any changes of significance to their handbook and a summary sheet rather than trying to, you know, put together a huge handbook for you. And, you know, and, and that would probably have, Suzanne probably could have got that done on one page, Jay could have got that done on a half a page and probably Carrie and David on a quarter of a page. But produce the whole handbook doesn't make a lot of sense because it doesn't change dramatically. And so my recommendation in following years is just to have the principals do a summary of, of changes. But I would, you know, defer to you if you want to see the whole handbook, we can continue to do that.
Denise?
I don't have any issue as far as, you know, our approval or what have you, but I do like to see the handbook. So as long as it was somehow available, I know, what can I say, I like stuff like that. Because I would have liked that high school, like, I might not have seen that page and I found that really interesting. So, I mean, I don't, I don't feel like we need to necessarily approve, you know, have the whole thing in front of us to make any approved changes or whatever, but at some point, just to be, have it available.
Yep. So we could give you the handbooks in an electronic version in the fall, but do the summary of changes in the summer. So you guys have, if, you know, if, the scheduling for both of those schools has been pretty significant in how they've changed their master schedule to make sure that there's reteaching periods and, and extra help for kids, you wouldn't know that if, you know, you didn't get a summary from Jay and Suzanne saying this is how we've restructured in order to accommodate needs. And I think that's the piece that's the most important, but we obviously can give you, because it's electronic, it doesn't, doesn't produce more paper. I think that would take the pressure off of Jay and Suzanne in particular. It's not like Carrie and David don't do it, but theirs are so big.
And is the reason it's been coming to us because there's a policy that says so and so should we?
Yeah.
So we'll look at it and policy and revise the policy?
Yeah, I think that, that'd be good to look at that. Okay. So we have a number of motions to affirm hiring that has already happened, correct?
Yep.
So I don't know if people want to do that as a block, whether they want to like individually prove, affirm these. Your call?
I'll do them as a block.
Okay.
So I'll name the names, so, and I hope I say the name right. Susan Lifer as elementary technology integrator at Masway. Sarah Curtin, elementary technology integrator at MoHaramet. And then Candace French World, she'll be middle school world language. And the last one is Victoria Ficker, physical education. And that's at the high school, I believe.
Yes.
At the high school. Okay. So I move all those.
Moved as a block by Kenny. Is her second?
I'll second.
Second by Denise. I just had one question. Are the mass, are the technology integrators on the teacher scale?
Yes, they're all part of the teacher contract.
Okay, okay.
And my comment too is just to thank Sarah Curtin for all the years she spent as an elementary school teacher. And on a personal note, my daughter went to UNH's program, the preschool program, and Sarah was the intern in my daughter's first year of education. And even at that age, had a tremendous impact on my daughter. And so just really want to recognize Sarah for her wonderful career so far and continuing it in another vein.
And I would say that both of the people who, Sarah and Suzanne, who stepped forward for these positions were the unanimous choice of the selection committee and will be fabulous additions to both Masway and MoHaramet. We're very, very fortunate to have these two people willing to do this job.
Okay. So we have a motion, a move, we have a second, right? Who's the second?
I, I second.
Denise.
Denise, I'm sorry, okay. Further discussion on these? No? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, all four of these positions are affirmed. A motion to approve the sustainability green team, garden coordinator stipend positions. Al?
So moved.
Moved by Al, is her second? Second by Dan. Discussion on these? No? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, those are approved. I think that's all the motions we have, right?
Mm-hmm.
School board committee updates. Say the negotiating team met once with the bus drivers and their representative, their union representative. And so just basically set the ground rules. We set up the next three meetings through September, so we got to start on that. Other committee update?
And we'll be reaching out to the board itself in the beginning of September to get guidance from you in relation to what our, what our parameters are in negotiation. So the committee represents the seven of you. In order for us to do the job that you want, we need to know where you stand as a group.
And probably in September, we'll have more of an idea kind of what issues will be coming up, yeah. Okay. Other committee updates? Nope. Public comment? Nope. Wow.
Shortest meeting ever.
Okay, future meetings as listed. There are no non-public or non-meeting sessions, so I think we're ready to adjourn. Al?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by, moved by Al, second by Dan. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Shortest meeting yet.